All right.
Um, good evening.
Great, good evening.
Weird setup here. Um, it is March 19th, uh, 2025. It is 6:01 PM. Um, we are here for a meeting. Sorry, I have so much paper in front of me. Um, we're here for a meeting on an application for 55 Main Street. The owner is 55 Main Street LLC. They are seeking a special permit for the construction of a, or you know, modification for the building to be a two-unit dwelling. And, um, so as the, the chair, I'll be directing the meeting. We will go over the application. We'll go over the documents that were submitted by other boards. Um, and then we will open it to the public where there will ask, you know, potentially ask some additional questions, ask the applicant to give us some information about the project. Um, and then, once we have all the information needed, we'll close the meeting where we'll talk, the board will talk amongst ourselves. Um, and then we will make a decision based on the zoning bylaws.
Awesome. First, how is everyone doing? Everyone's having a great day so far.
Um, we are doing, oh, yeah, great. Um, so we have all the voting members here. Um, and then our associate members. And would anyone like to, oh, I have to read everything into record now. It's been a minute. We've had a meeting. So is this, that's the 2015 one, printed everything out?
During the other, the other boards.
Okay. Thank you. So we have, um, a few documents from the other boards that I will read into the record. The select board sent a inter-office memo on March 18th saying, "The select board has started a scheduled meeting on Monday, March 17th, 2025. Received and reviewed the above reference application as submitted. There is no particular concerns regarding this request, but encouraged the zoning board of appeals to pay special attention to Department of Public Works comments regarding the loss of commercial space." And we have an email from...
That's planning board.
Oh, that's planning board. Um, from the planning board that there was a motion made for the 55 Main Street application for a favorable recommendation to the zoning board of appeals that the use be formally recognized to convert 55 Main Street residential use. It's for Stephen.
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
Is that you?
That's right. But it's supposed to be for...
For the LLC. It was voted 5 and O. And then we have a letter from the Department of Public Works dated March 13th. Um, that states the following. "The Department of Public Works is in receipt of a special permit request to change the commercial space in apartments into two-family dwellings, currently residential use, located at 55 North Main Street in Belsham, Mass. Please be advised, the department has the following concerns, comments regarding this request. The approval of a new sewer application will be required before service can resume to the site. A change in use from commercial to residential will result in a rate adjustment. Although not within department jurisdiction, I express concern with the application itself as petition request relief under section 145-11, section two, construction of a two-dwelling unit. However, this application proposes to convert an existing mixed-use building into a two-dwelling residential unit. The absence of a local definition, MGL7C, section one defines conversion as a work required to modify or adjust into your space arrangement or other physical characteristics of an existing facility that may be effectively utilized for a new functional purpose. Since the town's bylaw specifically differentiates between the term conversion, which is at 145-11 residential use number four, versus construction at 145-11 residential use system number two, the board should consider the legality of this request. Furthermore, the board should take into consideration the intent of the B1 district, which is to encourage retail and professional activities. There was insignificant discussion as of late concerning the budgetary drain residential units imposed upon the town's budget and the need for an increase in business enterprises to fill this tax gap. An approval of this application, i.e. removing commercial space and replacing it with residential, will not only contribute to the budgetary deficit, but is contrary to the intent of the B1 district." And then it is signed by Linda Leduke, the director of Department of Public Works. Am I missing anything else?
There's all of them.
Okay. So...
Make a motion, open the floor for you.
A second.
All in favor? Okay. Um... Would you like to tell us about the project?
Um, sure. I just want to convert it over to a, uh, two-unit, and I still want to be able to keep the B1 zoning for the commercial side of it as well. So therefore, anytime in the future someone wants to come in and, you know, turn the first level into a business and still rent the second floor, it's really not much change. Just literally adding one or two walls and making sure that, you know, there's a second egress. So it's not going to be, I think, anything substantial as far as like construction. Right inside our town, uh, great location. And obviously, you know, the, the town could definitely be changed. Uh, can definitely benefit from the change, the look of the property, so.
Thank you, Trudy.
Steve.
Yeah, just for the, the full name for the record.
Stephen Delinsa, the name on the top of the application.
Hey, definitely.
Did I pronounce it?
Yes, it's Stephen Delinsa.
Oh, okay. That's for you. Sorry. Can I ask, um, you purchased the property two years ago. Um, what, I mean, I say on behalf of the LLC.
On behalf of the LLC, yes.
The LLC purchased the property two years ago. What, what's been going on at the property currently? Is it occupied? Has it been tenanted?
Right now, it is being occupied. We already got the permit to start construction, so good call. And the only thing we're waiting for right now to go full throttle, where you have the dumpster there, is a special permit for the rise.
So has it been vacant for two years?
Yes.
Okay. Um, was there any efforts or consideration to try and get it mixed use? Kind of to have commercial tenants in there?
Yes, I did put out a sign. I got a couple of hits on it, but nothing really prominent that, that really stuck. And it's just, you know, unfortunately, there really isn't that much activity in this area as of yet. And hence why I want to make sure that the zoning still stays to be, you know, remain commercial, so that if opportunity does arise, someone can easily purchase it, you know, might be a CVS, it might be, you know.
Does zoning a lot change? Um, a special permit is kind of an exception.
Yes.
To the zoning, but it's still going to be in the zoning district.
Absolutely.
That's not, uh, a concern. So we saw the 2015, um, application was attached to your application.
Yes.
Was it ever converted? So that one was applying for a conversion under old zoning rules, um, but trying to do, I think, two residential and then two split commercial on the bottom. Was it, do you know if that was ever done? Kind of what, what does it, what did it look like when you approached or...
I think that they ended up doing it. However, I don't know how they had it printed out, but there are two ba-, two full bathrooms in there now. Just trying to think from what I was thinking. Two full bathrooms in there now. Definitely a second bathroom, um, half bathroom on the first floor. And the second floor has all the connections for another half bathroom. And so it seems as though it was used for both, so.
So, so when you got it, it was currently configured in a way that doesn't allow for like two commercial spaces and two residential spaces?
Exactly.
Okay.
So it seems like that was never completed, but it was interesting to see that, uh, what, what happened, you know, 10 years ago.
And the way, just for clarity's sake, the way that you're looking to change it around is so that it's just two residential?
Yes.
No commercials?
No commercials.
Use all the spare footage for the...
All, all residential.
Yeah.
And if you guys can find it in my favor, then hopefully we do some more, you know?
While the house is built in 2015. It's north of...
Uh, there is a... And there's a preservation restriction agreement. I'm sure you'll keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
I was just hoping around the registration. Um, does anyone have any more questions?
Um, yeah, just a quick one. Number one, um, not only will you still be in the B1 district, but if you want to do anything business, you can do it by right.
Oh, perfect.
Um, you don't have to get a special permit or anything to do this, um, in, in that district. Um, the only thing that I have to say is, is to add to what Jen said, that you're in a historic, um, and Wayne, historical overlay bylaw district.
Okay.
And if, if we do, um, decide to, to, to grant you a special permit or issue a special permit, um, that doesn't relieve you from having to, to submit anything to the, that you plan to do the exterior of the building to the historical bylaw commission for the review.
Absolutely. And honestly, spray some paint, that I still have all the shutters. Just make it look good and keep the same, you know, whether it's heritage tradition that has been there for however long it has been there, so.
I don't, I don't think they'll oppose you taking down that side. Number one. And number two, um, I just want to comment, um, for the record, um, I want you to have a copy of that.
Yes.
I was shocked when I read that. Um, and I'll tell you why. Um, converting into a multi, two-family dwelling is allowable by right, not by right, by, by, by the, um, um, in, in the zoning district with a permit by the, um, by the zoning board of appeals. Um, the, the, uh, just, just, just to say it, uh, I don't understand the comment about, um, revenue earned from a business district. Uh, it's, it's the exact same tax rate. There's no different tax rate. And, um, so it's whatever you're paying, whatever you're paying now, so it'll never be paid and it'll just go up unless...
It's not going to change the district.
Right.
It's just a special permit.
Yeah, unless the assessors decide to split business in residential rates someday, which I don't foresee that happening. Um, so I, I, I don't really see that as a viable argument um, against the granting of the special permit. That's all I'm going to say.
All right, I'll do that.
If there are no other questions, would anyone like to make a motion to close the meeting?
I just have one more quick question. So about the exterior, when we were talking about the historical district overlay, um, did you have to modify anything for like egresses or anything like that at all?
Yes, so because I am going to separate the bottom from the top floor in the plans, it specifies that we are going to put a separate egress at the top. There was a ladder there, but that's not going to pass. So we, we are going to put a separate egress at the top.
Okay.
But from the plans, it looks like those are in the back.
Yes, in the back.
So, I don't know. Well, so again, the historic district, they'll have some things to say.
Right.
Uh, because there's certain requirements of facilities, et cetera, like, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure. I don't know them, so.
You trust me.
Yeah, they will let you know. You also have it all set in your preservation restriction that are on there that talks about, um, all sorts of things.
I promise you, if they want me to keep the metal ladder...
That's probably not his story.
They will save a lot of work, so I will not appeal.
Yeah, that one might not, that one might not strike back.
The last time it came up, we discussed the preservation history of the tanning salon. That was a...
Okay. Well, um, would anyone like to make a motion to close the public works in the meeting?
Sure, I'd make a motion to close the public works in the meeting. A second?
All in favor? Great. Um, so, uh, when there is a special permit brought before us, uh, if all elements are met, the zoning bylaws say we shall grant the motion. So this doesn't have the same kind of elements that are involved in the variance. So we are bound by the, um, the, the bylaw. Um, and it is in the B1, B1 district. It's limited business, primarily retail, professional activities. Also in the historic village protection overlay, um, which is, um, it's an overlay district that the purpose of which is to limit the type of, type, intensity, appearance of businesses because of the historic nature. It's, um, good, a good thing to make note that in the overlay protection that mixed uses, mixed uses are permitted, which means, you know, it envisions the idea of residential in there. Um, and that it is, of course, also in a, a, in the, um, scheduled uses, a, allowed with a special permit. And so we look at the elements, um, that it will not be... The first element is that it will not be detrimental to the established or future character of the town and neighborhood. Um, the application, you know, talks about the other multifamily units that are right neighboring there, which I think is very persuasive. Um, when we're looking at the, the character and also considering that it's, it's been vacant and kind of starting to get run down. So in my opinion, it meets that first element, that it will not nullify or essentially derogate from the intent or purpose of the zoning district. So as I just mentioned, you know, residential is contemplated there. Um, that having, it's contemplated within the schedule of uses as permitted with a special permit. Um, and so I don't think it, it, you know, takes away from the, the purpose of the zoning district, considering the, the two, the overlay and the business district, and that it will leave in harmony and intent with a general purpose, um, of the chapter, which, uh, I, I, again, because it's contemplated as something, and then when we look at it in the context of the overall community, um, I think it, it needs those elements.
All right.
I just, on the special permit, I always, the concern is that the permit, special permit goes with the applicant or does it go with the property? How is, how is this town? I'm very confused with the special permits here. Is it seen anywhere? Is it...
Typically, it goes with the applicant, but if you allow the applicant to do a physical change to the property...
We understand, but if he sells it, the new owner would have to come back in front of us for another permit?
I don't believe so.
No?
But not, if, if you were doing home occupancy.
Yeah.
Business, then, then it's tied to, you know, but if you're doing physical alterations to your building...
Yeah, so it stays with the property.
Yeah, you know, when, when the person sells the property, it's not going to be forced.
No, I, I just wanted to convert it.
Because I don't see any...
I mean, if you think about it, if you get halfway through construction to convert it and then it has to, you know, sell or puts it in a nominee, you know, sometimes people buy it in their own name and then transfer it to a nominee that's like an LLC to hold it instead, um, it's, it's...
Well, like, how about, how about home occupancy business?
So that would be tied...
With the, with the applicant.
It's, it's tied to that.
Okay, so that's, that's...
I don't know that it's specifically in, I know that they're good for two, I know they expire after two years if they haven't been used.
Used, right. They go... So if the home occupancy runs with the applicant, this can remember the property, okay? In regards to changing it back?
Yeah.
Convert it back from...
Well, if they decide to, if they decide to sell the building in 10 years, the town doesn't have the right to evict.
No.
But two towns have the right.
No, no, no.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so in that case, it's definitely tied to. Yeah, duh, obviously.
Yeah.
Um, I think we talked a little bit about how there should be some, uh, contingencies upon it because of its, um, place on the, within the historic district, knowing that that's a separate approval process that's going to go to more, kind of more specifics. We're talking about the use, learning to say paint color, siding, those kinds of things. So we'll, um, I would say we should condition it that way in addition to, I think, our...
As far as regarding, I give you the same paint color.
So they're going to tell you, they're going to tell you what's up with all of that.
Just to bring them into the conversation.
Okay.
Suggestion, I guess, or the contingency.
I'm sure, I'm sure the building commissioner probably will force that.
Yeah.
If he sees this appropriate. All right. Well, I, I want to make a motion that we move everything that Jen just described, um, as opposed to repeating it or approval for the special permit for 55 Main Street.
A second.
With the condition...
Condition of...
Uh, we also have that other one. Uh, the applicant will certify to the ZDA. The certificate of this decision has been reported against the property by providing a copy of said document to the ZDA with the marks of the hand for Crown and Registry of Deeds. Within 90 days of the issuance of the certificate, failure to comply with this condition will constitute a violation of the Belsham zoning bylaws and subject the applicant to enforcement as provided in section 145-67 of the zoning bylaws. We get that, you get, you will get instructions.
Okay, I'm going to say English, please.
Uh, sorry, I interrupted. So, motion?
You just said the condition.
Conditions.
So I second? I second the approval.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion passed. Applicant approved.
The place was vacant for many years when we were at the last time, and it's been vacant ever since, as far as I know. The nice stuff can be...
10 years on?
Well, it's not...
Well, since we saw it, yeah, it was 10 years ago. I don't know how long it's been before that.
What's going to happen is, um, I'm going to do the type of the decision. Uh, the voting members are going to sign it, you review and sign it. And I bring it to the clerk's office. She stamps it. That begins a 20-day appeal period, which is automatic on special permit variances. After that 20 days, there's no appeals. Um, it gets stamped again by the clerk, um, with a seal on it. Get ahold of you. You can come and pick it up, or I can mail it to you, and it'll come with a certificate. That's what you need to take to, you need the decision and the certificate. You take it to the registry of deeds in Northampton, register it against the property. And then if you could just email me or mail me a copy of the receipt.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So it should only be, you know, within, you know, within a week, you'll get, uh, the first, you know, the 20-day appeal period when it starts.
Not a problem.
Yeah, and then talk to Paul about the historic stuff.
Okay.
I think he'll give you the guidance on what you need to do for that.
All right, do that.
You're all right.
Why, thank you.
You're welcome.
I should have grabbed some food over there and brought it here.
I mean, I guess they're probably going to be here for a little longer than we are. So, all right. Thank you. Do we have to re-vote on the other one?
Bring that back up again. Open it again or nullify or last?
I, I think it's just a confirmation vote that you, you know...
You, before you were sworn in, you, after you were sworn in, now agree with you before you were signing, sworn in. Okay, I guess we'll just vote to confirm.
What's the address?
So this was our other...
You just read the...
Two-family. Um, so it was for, it was August 024. Cedar Construction LLC for a special permit to construct a duplex at Five Way Road across from the, uh, the gas station, which is another...
I make a motion and grant special permit for Five Way Road.
Uh, second?
All in favor?
All right.
There we go. We're re-confirmed.
Officially, official.
Which is good. I mean, isn't that, that was just complete, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
That you made sure of.
Right now.
Real quick.
Yeah.
Looks good.
Yeah, it does look good.
Do we have to sign, is there anything we need to sign?
This is in regards to...
Yes.
Can, can I just add something? Uh, just before the meeting, Dan came in from the planning board just to see if we had any questions about the memo that they sent out regarding, um, standing for appeals of zoning board of appeals decisions. Um, I, you know, we, we talked about it before the news, but, and, and, you know, we didn't take it as, as anything really discussed. It was basically just a, oh, by the way, oh, by, by the way, this is going to go in front of town, um, meeting, um, for our bylaws, but it just, it just adopts the, the new state judicial interpretation of the standing clause, which, I mean, we could have all the pages for a while. Doesn't matter.
You guys all see the, uh, the new, um...
The accessory dwelling?
The accessory dwelling stuff that came out, that they're allowed by right as long as they meet, like, certain elements. So as long as you, basically, as long as they have a large enough piece of property, it seems like you're not trying to put it right next to, you know, right on top of the, um, the property line. The setbacks. And it meets the size requirements.
Multi-family kind of...
I think that's a good, that's a good change, personally.
Yeah.
It is, we got a five, we'll kick in in regards to septic.
Well, that would happen no matter what.
No matter what.
No matter what, that would happen. That's, that's a health thing. That's, that has to happen.
Right.
But I think it's great.
I hear there's a housing shortage, that's all we need.
Yeah. People are going to convert the home to an accessory dwelling just so they could get a few hundred dollars on them. A lot that's going to be, that's going to be for family members.
Uh, for that. The brother law's going to force, I might need to go in.
I came to this before I was on this board for converting my garage on their property, and that's, it was not another, because I already had an apartment above the garage. I already had the cottage, right? So I was going to convert it to a bottom part, to another part.
So you're just going to have a four-family home?
It's going to be all family.
Yeah.
And I got a spare locker in the other house with accessory...
Family compound. I don't know.
Yeah, so, but everything's changed. I doubt about a house.
What I like about it is, um, the, as you were saying, the multi-generational people maybe wanting to take care of their, let's say, their parents, but not going into assisted living. Maybe they would really like to live next door to their adult children, and maybe the adult children would like it as well. I think it's really kind. And also each of them...
They're separate, they're separate little areas, but at least they're for each other, yeah?
Well, the reason earlier is because, I think you guys mentioned something about, because the schools around here, a lot of people are... cause the schools around here, that a lot of people are subletting all these accessory buildings out to students and there was gonna be a big flux of college students.
Yeah, so now it's, now it's changed with this, cause of housing.
We'll see, we'll see if we get any of those, see if we get any of those projects coming up. Our desk here. Uh, the one other thing that I will say about that is I wonder, you know, just moving forward with that type of addition to a property, increasing the property value, uh, is that gonna further the gap between affordability of.
Home ownership.
Home ownership, right? Like, okay, let's rent to our, our, our kids because it's crazy expensive to rent just out in, in the, in the landscape. Um, so they get a great break on, on the rents and stuff like that. But when they move out, um, that house still has that second unit and it's increased in value.
This has come up, you can't, you can't tell somebody that they can't prove the property.
No, no, but that is, I do think.
Is that right? Like, is an owner's right, affordability?
But that's where.
That's gonna be that extensive, that it's gonna make that much of an impact, but.
I mean, that's why it's good, we have our little districts, um, that are smaller lots. So our little small lot districts will continue to be starter homes, more affordable. They won't be able to afford to put, you know, they won't have the space to be putting the accessory units. So I think as long as there's that kind of balance too.
It's Spanish, I was at the state training once and they used Dan Woods as an example for all state.
Yeah.
Of an open space community development, which is actually a nice presentation.
That's cool. I think it's cool that we have those. We have a couple of them.
Yeah, the elder estates, right?
Hmm?
Elder estates.
I think so, yeah, yeah. And I think the one going up that's finally being constructed, um, on the way to my house, uh, is one.
The Hillcrest Sunshine.
I don't know what it's called, all I know is that they were blasting, like, the, the stone was much worse than I thought it was supposed to be and it took.
Garage.
And like, it's been ten, I've been in my house for ten years and then the, the homes there are finally just now going up. Um, so it took a while, but I think that's also one. So far as smaller lot sizes, a lot of them are tall, starter homish. Uh, anyway, but we can probably, no.
So we didn't need to do anything with that necessarily, we didn't have to go on anything or say that we didn't have any changes or like, there's no.
Not enough, just we acknowledge it.
Okay.
Yeah, there's stuff going on and then everything will get, um.
Have the term bylaws, like a verbatim with what we got on the state.
Basically, if somebody here in the historic district puts a fence up in front of their house, somebody from Turkey Hill can't come over here and they wouldn't have standing.
Oh, that's why, yeah, that makes sense. They should only have butters.
I drive by it once a week, I don't want to get, that doesn't, that doesn't count. I've never seen it, but I can imagine it happens.
I can definitely imagine.
I must have closed the meeting.
I, I think there's nothing else.
I think we should mention a lot of it.
No, um, okay, alright, close that.
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.